Yes.
Yep, I saw him. He hasn't changed.
You do?
No, I didn't either. And also, this is... I never found one before that. And they... It's the biggest estate. I was turning up the order and I just... It's like a lot. But it's not... Well, they're made sure I got a strike on every single... Four of them all... They were all big.
Did you...
No, they were in season, but then so I was still excited. I'm working the boat now. All the other ones. So by the time I got back to that one, he... That was... Like I...
But the fact is, here's the... Yeah. No, no, no. These, these are... They're too expensive.
And so we... I took it around myself.
This is, this is not... This is not, you know, a twenty-five dollars...
Oh, exactly.
Someplace expensive. And it was bad for my person said they wanted to go to... And they got it on in March. And then because COVID, that closed down.
As usual, this is not the first time something like this... You look at it, it's... Didn't know there's a slot on this. What's a slot?
The room, I mean, it's a bathroom.
They... There's a certain, like, minimum size of the small signs. They have to be, like, over forty acres or forty acres. And I said, "There is?" So I said, "So..." He said, "No." That's not it.
We know about Kenner.
Yeah, yeah. And so, you know... You looked in New York City. We were looking for a couple of...
Thank you for your time.
So, yeah. Yeah, so anyway, it's, it's words. It's really...
So I just...
Oh, that was... Cottage Core.
My first rock I bought, too. Where did you get that? Eight or nine miles.
Sure. Morning. So anyway, or something around that. That's my rule.
All right, is everyone here?
I am.
Ready back there?
Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna call the, uh, regular meeting of the Rattan Haven County Planning Commission for September sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Order. And I'd like to invite all citizens of the United States to drive in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, uh, let's take the role of Light here. Mr. Shulman.
Here.
Kolder.
Here.
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Mr. Frazier. Mr. Fishy. Mr. Conick also here. Everyone's here, so welcome. Good to see you all. Hope everybody's in good health.
Were you worried because of the word of it?
No, I'm not worried of it. The next item is the adoption of the agenda. Does anybody want, uh... Make a motion on that? How about if we kicked the minutes because again... Kind of my suggestion is because we have a public hearing and some other stuff, so is everybody okay with that? Any other proposed changes? Can we talk about the dress code? In the habit? Somebody make a motion for the gentleman.
Move to the top.
Doesn't matter because... Second.
Second.
All right, Mr. Light, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. No, say no. The odds have it. The vote is adopted. All right, we're gonna skip the... We're gonna skip the, uh, minutes. Next to last. So the next order of business is a public hearing on rezoning application number twenty-six-one. I see the applicant, Mr. Anthony, is here. I think that's him. Behind that mask. Ms. Summers, do you wanna review the basic components of this? We went, we went over it the last time before we said for public hearing, but just some rights one as well.
Sure. Just service and we can request to remove the property back to the original or, uh... The property is located on route eleven in Amesville. In total, twenty-six point two three four acres. In nineteen eighty-seven, Anthony's rezoned approximately four acre portion of this property ordering route eleven adjacent to the baby store. From RR five to agricultural. At the time of the rezoning application intended that portion of the tract to be part of the Long Mountain Nursery's operating operation. However, they never used the length of that. Now they wish to restore that four acre back to the original RR five. The health department commented that had a lot of times not impacted the first cycle of property. However, the applicants did have the sole study done and it does work. VDOT has commented that an entrance was issued back in nineteen ninety-eight for a single-family dwelling wasn't sold and had to use the building entrance because a single-family home was not available. It's acceptable to continue to use that building entrance for any future development legally today, VDOT standards.
Okay. Ms. Trinity, do you wanna come up and say anything? I think that's pretty well. But you can wait until after the public comment if there is any. If you have anything to add or...
Which I was best, um...
I have a feeling there's not gonna be any post-it first comments on this.
Yeah.
Just guessing.
I mean, I... We're not trying to build on the front to use that entrance or we're giving the land to my daughter who we hope to lure back to back Canaan from warranty. She built it back.
So, but the floor is still gonna be part of the main...
What I, what I, what we're trying to do is simply give the tract to my son-in-law and my daughter that we purchased back in nineteen eighty whatever.
Right.
I'm just trying to restore it to its original zoning because at the time they said it'll be trivial. Turned out, everything changes, of course, and they had said it would be trivial just to change Act RR five, so that's why I put in a petition.
Okay. Any questions? Fresh members? All right, I'm going to declare the public hearing open. If anybody wishes to comment on this application, please come forward, uh, and state your name, Magistero District. You can ask as much as you want, unless there's not many people here. The public hearing's now open. Anybody? Coming once, twice, last, the final call around. All right, there's no comments from the public and there's no Zoom, so I'm gonna declare the public hearing closed. Does somebody wanna make a motion to make a recommendation one way or the other to the board of supervisors on this?
My move would be, my move would be approve the change for Mr. Anthony. That was the question.
Okay, without a motion to make a recommendation of approval to the board of supervisors, is there a second? Mr. Light, second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I think there's discussion.
Okay. Mr. Henry?
You know, this property, this, this lot is proposed five acres, it's a part of the larger parcel. We're dealing, I guess, with five acres or so, twenty-six acres or so. That there.
Four acres.
Four acres. The VDOT, uh, very much qualified their, their common entrance permit. And this may be, you know, if he wants, if Mr. Anthony wants to give a lot to his daughter, parcel, that he could've done this by family division, correct? Ms. Summers? And... That's one thing if he wants to do a lot to his daughter, but I guess if the balance of the property is five acres and this is part of a division plan...
Excuse me, is, is the balance five? It's four acres that's on agriculture now. How, how many?
Twenty-six acres.
Right, so still gonna be one big lot.
But he could've done a family division.
What difference does that make? He could've made a two acre lot.
Yeah, he could've made a two acre lot. But, but what I'm saying, you know, it'd be zoning. If this is gonna be, if it's gonna be twenty-six acres, it's gonna be five lots. And that's the ultimate plan here, then... Well, you know, I, I think in terms of land use here, uh, in the zoning, uh, I think this is a plan to do a five acre, five lots here. I, I would like to see more definite, um, information on the entrance here because, like I said, the easiest thing to acknowledge is simply all you wanted to do was a family transfer to the family division. This, we, we wouldn't have been here, but rezoning tells me something else.
But, yeah, because what it tells me, I mean, the minimum lot size in agriculture is two acres. Okay, the minimum lot size in RR five is five acres, thus the name RR five, right? So it's really gonna be, it's kinda, it's kinda a down zoning.
Six to five.
Six, six to six. Six what?
Lots.
Oh. Well, the other part is still zoned RR five, that never changed. In other words, if a twenty-six acre lot, they took this section, just tell me if I'm going wrong, they took this four acre piece and they didn't make a separate lot out of it, they just re-zoned four acres or whatever the fraction is, both the original twenty-six acre lot that was originally, well, not originally, but in nineteen eighty-four five zoned RR five. And they re-zoned the four acres, part of it, to agriculture so that they could have their nursery business, but I didn't wanna do that. And now they're just proposing to put it back the way it was. And so how many lots they could have or couldn't have, first of all, not in my way, nothing changed at all, if anything, it's gonna go down as a result of this.
But this way to not, this way here, right now, uh, I guess the maximum that they could do is four. And it gets a five, just about losing zoning.
How, how, it's twenty-six acres and they can have, if they can have two acre lots,
No, 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 that's what I'm saying. Without a family division, as it is now, you got twenty-one acres, twenty-two acres on RR five, that's four lots, correct?
Right.
And the ag doesn't give them another lot, so it's four lots and doing zoning. They got five lots.
Right, I don't think it makes any difference one way or the other because the minimum lot size in agriculture is actually less.
Only in term...
And then meanwhile, they're not proposing to subdivide it, they're proposing to just rezone it back the way it was, so if they come in...
Well, but the intent, the intent is, is to transfer. So is this simply a one lot transfer or is it sort of a...
That's your intent is to transfer the whole thing to your daughter, right?
Yes. The twenty-six acres or four, or four acres?
All of it.
All of it. We're just trying to, we bought twenty-six acres.
But are you transferring twenty-six acres or four acres?
Twenty-six?
Let me see.
We're transferring the whole thing. We're trying to restore it to the original zoning and give it to them and try to come back to Rattan Haven and build.
But what difference, if they, if they're gonna get twenty-six acres, what difference if it's four acres on front, sound like...
Well, you know, actually, to be honest with you, uh, I don't think it made any difference at all. I just told my daughter, I said, "Just because I think it's simpler."
Why is it simpler? Why is it simpler? I don't understand why it's simpler. If the whole, to do this, if you're gonna give the whole thing to her, she's gonna build one house. Why, why is it simpler to rezone it instead of having the way it is now, when she can build a house, no issue?
Well, see, I never, never discussed this to anybody. I just thought we'd be grateful to do this. I didn't realize the application fee, the soil, um, testing, eight hundred dollars. I didn't realize we were getting involved in any of this. She wouldn't have cared whether it was still agriculture, to be honest with you. I only did this because I thought it was the right thing to do. If I had some advice on it, um, maybe I would've known, so I just left it as it is.
See, see, did we get the map up there? Please. Seems to me that what's before us is the application where the reasoning for asking for it, uh, doesn't seem material, you know? For us, I agree that your connect, it looks like this is essentially a voluntary down zoning, if anything. Because of the, because of the, it seems to me they end up with fewer options this way than they would've had in the other because the other, the four acres that's currently agriculture could've been built on, so you're, they only had four acres, isn't true? They would've had the four acres under RR five plus the residual in, in the ag, so I don't...
You got one division right with twenty-five acres in the ag. I mean, you, you don't have two division rights until you get the fifty acres. So on how you get additional division rights with four acres from ag land versus RR five? Is that right, Mr. Cudding? I mean, this is not be hard to determine how many division rights twenty-six acres has when twenty-two is on RR five and four acres on that. The ag doesn't give it more division rights than RR five. Word for word.
Well, in, in, in a sense, well, I, I don't know, to me, that's always been one of...
Well, the logic has to be correct. I mean, I mean, everything here doesn't go together, you know? What the applicant says, it just makes things easier, well, to, before he's giving this whole thing to his daughter. I mean, he told me he's giving something to his daughter, I thought he's giving five acres to his daughter out front, this is why he wants to do it. But he says he wants to give the whole thing to his daughter, so you don't need to rezone it to give the whole thing to his daughter to build one house. But if this moves towards a five lot division, I just wanna make sure that you really have entrances because that entrance there at Mayhews on that back turn, you know, that's... When I go out of Mayhews, I go out the west side, not the east side, because it's safer on the west side. So it's not the best place, you know, to, to have an entrance if you got five lots. I don't know, it's, it's not safe. Safety, safety is a concern. It's just each the Mayhew store that joins Mayhew's. Yeah, the joint's Mayhew's store.
So it's not Jim and Brandon?
No, it's on the other side.
But it runs down to, uh, the next driver, doesn't it?
Yeah. All right, did you get that also?
So you got family division rights to RR five?
But...
It's the same, two acres.
But you're mixing up, to me, you're mixing apples and oranges because...
But you said, wait, wait, you said...
Family division rights are, are in the subdivision ordinance.
That's right.
And it's not gonna make any difference...
But this is not a, this is not a down zoning, this is a up zoning.
Well, it's agriculture down to...
No, it's agriculture to residential, that's not down, that's up.
Yeah, but it's an existing lot, isn't it? It's a split zoning right there.
It's, it's one, the lot isn't changing and we're not dealing with that, we're dealing with the...
Split zoning.
With, with one lot, a portion, a four point, whatever acre portion of which was re-zoned to agriculture.
When you go from four lots, potential to five lots, that's a up zoning. Let's get that clear. Is that correct? Because right now, you can't do nothing with that four acres of ag land unless it's gonna be part of a nine acre lot. If you do five acre, this four acres is gonna have to go with the five, it's gonna be a nine acre lot.
But he's not subdividing it now. If he wants to do that, that's gonna have to come back and if he's doing that and it doesn't qualify as an exemption to the subdivision ordinance, he's gonna have to come to the planning commission to have his entrance permit and all that lined up, so that's when you would examine all...
He's not gonna like your four division of that land.
Why not?
No, you don't, the commission gets a mandatory approval. Right?
I don't think so. I think so. That has nothing to do with what the zone category is, if it's more than, if it's more than a certain number of lots, whatever district it's in, whether it's a conservation, agriculture, RR five, or anything else, if it's more than, more than two lots, is my recollection, you corrected, uh-uh, Michelle, but if it's more than two lots, he's gotta get, it's a, it's, if, if it's more than two lots, any one of which is less than twenty-five acres, isn't that the definition of subdivision?
VDOT doesn't, but VDOT doesn't count family divisions, but...
Well, I'm not talking about VDOT. I'm talking about, nobody's dividing anything now. Mr., the whole family division thing is, is in the subdivision ordinance and if it's more than two lots, any one of which is less than twenty-five acres, it's a subdivision. And if it's a subdivision, there's only a very limited number of those that the zoning administrator, the subdivision administrator can approve administratively, that has to come back to the planning commission.
There's apples and apples or whatever.
Mr. Potter... Mr. Henry is talking about the safety of the traffic entering or, or turning into the driveway line. It's very, very... Or...
Now, there's already an entrance permit there for one lot.
That's a valid concern.
It's for one lot, and that's not gonna change, it's one lot. And the uses, the residential uses are the same, one dwelling per lot.
So you have to look at what you're done, re-zoning is gonna do, what's gonna allow. And it's gonna allow...
It conceivably could allow up to that if it gets approved, then part of the, if it gets approved is when, that's when you look at the entrance and will, having one entrance what they've gotten now.
So are you sure, Mr. Conick, about the, uh, the two, because right down the street here, uh, that Paul Poland's property just got divided into four parcels? Have you ever seen the platinum on that?
I don't work in the zoning office.
Well, you said some to the planning commission.
If it's a sub, if it doesn't qualify as an exemption to the subdivision...
Well, why is it four, four, five acre lots and RR five that's being divided, just like this is being divided, but why didn't that come through?
I don't know, I have to ask Michelle. What do you, what do you mean the nth degree? I'm just asking a question.
You're close with the answers, so I ask you a question to the answers.
Well, I don't know. Exceptions. The first one, it's not a subdivision, these are exceptions that can't, that don't have to come to the planning commission, so one, section one forty-seven dash thirty-six. First, a bona fide division of a lot parcel tract dating from nineteen sixty-two, but the owners are recording to not more than five lots cumulative, uh, for sale to the fam, family members. And then family transfers are exempt from the density limitations. Then, um... And then clustering is in here. So that's it. So it's not one of those things. It's not one of those things.
Wait, so what does it say, divisions have to go for a, uh...
A order. The subdivision's have to go, it's not, if it's a subdivision, it's gotta come to the planning. It's my understanding, huh?
I would also note that, again, on the, on the zoning district, lot size, the minimum lot size in agriculture is two acres, the minimum lot size in the five, that's five acres, so...
Right, that's what I...
But that's only applies to density. If you got a hundred acres, you can...
Yeah, that's a lot size.
Wait, 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 but no, that's lots.
Your lot size is what triggers where you have to come in or out. You're creating something non-conforming. So if, if they create, you know, two, two and a half, well, I don't know, uh, it, it comes down to the, it can either get triggered by the number of lots they were creating or the creation of a non-conforming lot. So the creation of a non-conforming lot, the bar is higher under RR five, under, at RR five than at these other acres. So it doesn't seem, I, I think your point in general that going from agriculture to residential is helping something, but given that the configuration of this parcel, it's hard to see how they can do anything more with this than they could go with. And I, I think you're right that it's odd that they're doing this because it's not clear why, why this is driving them for their intention. So I share your compliment over what the purpose of this is, but I don't know that that's really something we can resolve here, so we're developing to our decision.
Well, did anybody else, because I, I, I mean, I, I, first of all, I don't think that this is gonna dissolve. And if you look at one forty-seven thirty-seven, it says right there, maximum density, dwelling units per acre. The maximum density in agriculture is one dwelling unit per twenty-five, in RR five it's one per five acres. And but the ma, minimum lot size in agriculture is two acres and the minimum lot size is five acres. So in one sense, it's a down zoning and one sense it's an up zoning, I suppose.
Well...
But, but, uh, in the...
One, one, one final comment and I'll shut up. So everybody, every time we've had a rezoning request, it's always been worried about the precedent that was set. The last time we had a rezoning was in Sperryville where Estesville was being rezoned, commercial, adjacent to it, uh, it's a logical thing to do. Big concern about the precedent set. But think about this precedent. You're taking ag land, it's in Amesville, uh, in the rough village area, which hasn't been as mine, but by the comp land, sure, or by the board of supervisors. You're taking ag land and you're rezoning it to RR five. There's a precedent right there that you're doing. So just, so going down the road, so you get a hundred acres down there, joining, uh, some RR five, and say, well, then you've never done this, we'll never have the precedent, you got the precedent now, so that's all I'm saying. Well, I think the exception to this is that he voluntarily put in an ag, you know, it's kind of a mea culpa, he wants, what back to him? Well, you know, uh, what, what you did twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago, then going forward, it's, it's depressing that you're going down.
Well, I guess, you would use that if you went to court, you meant to put it... Good, okay. Well, one thing that I wanted to add, I'm glad you brought it, whatever you just brought up in the grandery, is that if, if there was no history such as there is, uh, you know, history means a lot to me, I mean, in their wisdom, the people who pay us this zoning ordinance also pay us the amount and they set this whole area RR five, notwithstanding that this was a twenty-five acre lot. So far, being for me, the same that Newble and Dickel Beer and the P. Destas didn't know what they were doing when they go out that crayon and colored that in the way they did. But having done that and having, even aside from the history, the fact of the matter is that this little peony piece, as you can see from the map, you can remember, it is in a sea of residential, uh, rural residential five acre zoning. It's, and, and it's really, uh, if I was ever back then gonna go to court, I would've said, uh, that, that the original rezoning of this, whenever it was, to agriculture was spot zoning and probably questionable on that grounds because what, why, what distinguishes that little four acre chunk from everything around it? So we're really, one could argue that we're really eliminating something that might've been illegal spot zoning when it was done and put it back the way it was. Uh, and I, again, I mean, I appreciate all your points about the entrance and all that, but I think those are issues that should they, at some future time, choose to subdivide it, just because the thing has a minimum lot size or it meets the... just because the thing has a minimum lot size or it meets the density requirements? If they don't meet all the other standards, they're not going to get approved. They don't come in and the highway department says, well, you just barely have enough for one, a tight distance and this and that. For one, a single family entrance, it doesn't mean that they're going to approve it for five residential lots, or four, or three, or two. They may say no. And it sounds immediately, from the verge of saying that, that it's okay the way it is, but they wouldn't, they wouldn't increase it. So those would all be considerations that would have to be taken up by either the zoning administrator or the planning commission. But I think they're going to make a five lot subdivision and have to come to us or whoever's here then. So that's my, is there any further discussion on this? You have a motion to recommend it for approval. We've got a second.
We take it at this far. It does seem like there's still a little bit of ambiguity about whether it was originally zoned this way or whether it was rezoned in some way to agriculture. The way you just described it and the way I was thinking of it makes it seem like it was RR5 and it got somehow rezoned.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that's the case. Is that?
It was.
That's correct. I had this, I imagine that we could, Long Mountain Nursery is on Long Mountain and it's far from Pulpetaxis. So we got this great idea. We said, in order to succeed, if we want to succeed, we've got to have a presence on 211. So I talked to someone and they said, you know, we had purchased this land. They said, well, if you just change it to agriculture, you can grow things there and sell on the highway. Well, we never got that for them. And Long Mountain Nursery and Pulpetaxis weren't ten years. So I was just trying to turn the zoning back to the original, hand it on to the next generation.
Well, I mean, the only thing I would add is originally, there wasn't any RR5 before 1985. So back then, I'm pretty sure this was agriculture. Because in 1974 ordinance, which I used to always carry, but I don't have it in 1980.
Supposed to be zoned from act to act.
No. And when it was, in, in 1985, when the new, the new ordinance was adopted, it, it contained in addition to the, what the old ordinance had, a designation or a, an area called residential subdivision. And that's like up on Air Mountain where the Pentecostal Church revival place is, down Blossom, it's both Blossom and Lake Blading or something like that. That was a residential subdivision area. All along the Oscar Linder tracks there on, off of Hunter's Road. Is that called? Peyton Park tip, that was a residential subdivision area. Well, when the 1985 ordinance came in, the residential subdivision zone was eliminated and more or less replaced by RR5. And so that's when this map, so that's when this map was made. Take a look at it. So this whole area was looped into an RR5 zone. And so when we were saying originally, we're talking about originally in 1985, we did this ordinance. And then what approximate year was it when the rezoned?
Eighty seven.
Eighty seven. Okay, so a couple of years later, that's when, that's when they came up with this, came in with the rezoning and rezoned it to agriculture. And so now we're basically going to put it back the way it was in 89.
Be interesting.
And, and it's all that time, you correct me if I'm wrong, all that time, there, there never has been any change in the lot lines, just in the zoning category of a portion of the lot.
It's been far. The land is.
Good. Okay, any other discussion? All right, the motion is to recommend approval. Mr. Light?
Aye.
Mr. Shulman?
Aye.
Mr. Kohler?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Standing.
Mr. Frazier? This issue? Connick votes aye. The motion carries, five to two, five in favor, nobody opposed, and two extensions. So we'll let the supervisor's note. And I will check with Michelle. Mr. Enton knew about when. I'm not sure if there's time to get it on for October, but. Okay, so it sounds like it's going to be in the November quarter supervisor meeting. There'll be a public hearing. Hopefully Mr. Henry will come to you. It'll be quick.
Thank you. I assume I can leave?
No, you have to. You stay right in that chair until November. No, you're free to go. So is anybody else that wanted to? Only can, I'll let you say. All right. What, you have to do subdivision stuff? Our next order of business is what?
We have a public comment. What's the comment?
All right, now, this is general text, general public comment period. If you want to talk about anything at all, hopefully something to do with planning, zoning, and the planning commission. This is your time. Please come up to the podium, try to limit, please state your name and magistrate of the district and keep your comments to, not events or less, if you could. Does anybody want to speak? Okay. Hope the comment period is closed. Our next order of business is the May amendments that we started on the last meeting. And so before we, rather than returning to where we left off, or maybe that is where we left off, Mr. Henry was kind enough to invite the agricultural extension agent, Mr. Love, to talk to us just about agriculture and so forth in general, so that as a background, I hope he knows that, to the proposed amendments about food processing and cannery amendment that was proposed to us, referred to us by the board of supervisors. So, Love?
So I'm not entirely sure what I'm supposed to do, but I was told to show up and so I did. I didn't have some, this has got that far right on. But here's some, I was trying to, so.
Oh, he's, there's a man that's asking if you would speak in, go to the podium.
Sure. I don't know if you do PowerPoints or not.
Well, I, I.
Can you do this here? Can you do this here? I didn't know if I could plug it or, plug through a few or not. Is there a way to do that? So do you? So do you drop it from your hand or is it generally from here? So once he's plugging in, I just, I guess I need you over this mic. I mean, he has.
Are we saying brush it? We are entering field or?
So a couple of things to talk about, just appropriately scaled businesses, Rappahannock, it's, and businesses within the context of Rappahannock, and these are food, again, food businesses. Examples of some other, other, a food business I thought I'd share with you. So when, anytime you start a food business, there's always barriers within. That's the first slide. All those regs, you have to comply with, local, state, federal. And there's, there's regulations that are fairly industry specific. So if you're dealing with dairy, that's one set of industry standards. If you're dealing with produce, that's another set of industry standards. And they have different organizations overseeing those, that, that regulation. But that's, give you some sense of what's out there. ABC, ATF, all those are regulating the wine, beer, distilleries industries. We all know that, but there's two different organizations, state and federal. So that's somewhat you have to think about when, when you're considering inviting industries to your community and how much that costs. So those are some barriers. And others, if you want to, are just, other things to think about in other communities that have been successful with food industries, they have, they have the infrastructure. They have the water, the sewer treatment, broadband, transportation, natural gas, electricity, the three phase tar, all those kinds of things that make those businesses more convenient to produce value added products. But that makes sense. And then there's a, there's also the need for the, the season of that and available raw food products. So there's a lot of stuff going on. So just go ahead and pass that. The other, others, the one before that was just a little bit about the different products. Again, there's, there can be foodborne pathogens that are really serious with some type of products that you have to really consider those, like raw milk or pasteurized milk. Shell-stable, shell-stable products are probably better. You don't have to move them as quickly. There's, there's things to be, there's, there's been, there's advantages to making those that they're, 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 there's not as much concern with pathogens and food safety. And they ship better, they store longer. So just the next slide. So there's a history of food businesses in Rappahannock County, and here are some of those. So then there's some pretty large scale facilities. The, the top picture is the Flatwood, that's a co-op. That's, was a pack, package shed and a cold storage for many, many years. Down to the lower left, that's the Sperryville infrastructure, cold storage, package sheds, and a mill. And then to the bottom right, as I'm looking at it, there's, there's, you had transportation. We had the horse wagons that were designed to haul those apples from here to the rail stations in Cove Everton from Royal. And from there, they were shipped to the port of, or the port of Norman. From there, they were shipped to England. So we, we've had an export, pretty large food business in this part of the world for some time. We just forgot about that. So as you can see, the top right picture, again, is part of our transportation system back in the day. We had at least three cooper's here in the community that built barrels in fact those, those apples in. And they were shipped to England. Queen Vicky liked our apple Marl Pimp. So we shipped a lot of apples over there. And then the lower, the Sperryville rescue squad was an apple drying shed, so they dried apples. And then there's the baggage shed, a little washroom that you may be familiar with. So, so it's, it's, the industry has been historically pretty widespread throughout the county and that, that gives you some sense of scale, how large the footprint looks on your landscape. It still does.
Which facility was this with the apples?
That's the, that's the Flatwoods.
That's the back of?
Yeah. Yeah. So, anyway, just, it's, there's a bunch of slides, so I need to keep moving. If that's, if you have questions, feel free to ask. I'll try to answer. But what we have now, one of the Adams Custom Slaughter is one of the facilities here. It's been here since 1991. It's a state inspected facility and it also distributes to a couple of local, has local distributions to a couple of other stores, home site retail. It's footprint, the slaughter facility and the packing house, or the slaughter facility and the, the meat processing area, it's about 4500 square feet rough. So next, maybe all about Virginia Chutney. That was established recently, more recently. Next slide, they started out, as many of these food businesses do in their house and their kitchen. And they started out on the left of their home and their, and then they grew. They were successfully grew into what's next. Next slide, well, sorry. The Virginia Chutney plant in, in Flat Hill. They, they needed room for expansion. So if you're thinking about food industries inviting those here, if they are successful, then there is a need for growth. You restrict that growth, then you restrict that industry. This is a dairy. Obviously, we don't have any dairies here down at the, down at Works in Franklin County. That's their farm market. That's where they started. Next slide. That's the facility grew into because they're a business group. And so they have distribution all the way up this way. That's the product. They do home delivery. They do, they deliver to grocery stores, even fiber products in Wavens, or at least two last year.
Franklin has another product there.
They do. They got a lot of value added products down there. So Franklin County is known as the supreme capital of the country.
That's another one of the next slide.
No, it's not. But my, my father's from Franklin, so he's pretty well aware of that, that value added business.
Therefore now, anything you say could be used against.
This is a mill down in southwestern part of the state. This is supposed to where I grew up. It's a Meadow Creek Dairy. Those folks actually moved down to that part of the world from, I think, I think it was Loudoun County. They established the dairy down there and they've been making cheese there since about 1980. They've, next slide, they've expanded. That's kind of give you some sense of what their, their scale is, of their production scale. Next slide. They've expanded three times. So they have larger cellar to, to make more cheese. And their, and their distribution is as far west as Mississippi River. And so you can, you can, Wisconsin all the way out that way. You can find their products in, in Wavens, places like that, specialty markets. So they've done a remarkable job and they're, you know, they're a long ways from a market. We talked a little bit about markets. They're 300 miles from DC, but they've been able to tap into those markets. The next slide, another, just another example of a dairy down in that area that's doing the same thing, but their distribution is more localized, stretches from Addy to Christiansburg. These are just a couple of local farms that begin to help each other, work together, and they have Jersey cows and that's, they, they branded that product based on their, their Jersey herds. Next, this is the Delaware Valley, Grayson County. It's Grayson Natural Foods and it's, they're, they're a meat processing plant. They're not a slaughter facility. So they bring in meats, they have meat slaughtered at a slaughter facility in North Carolina. This is right. They're counting down, helping them down. They break the product back, they break down the carcasses in their facility and they ship, pretty wide distribution there. Moms Organic Market in DC. They're, they've been really successful at selling to universities around Virginia and North Carolina. They've been approached by DOD for contracts for beef sticks. They, they're in Harrisonburg, pretty, pretty distinct food co-ops and a lot of other places. The most interesting thing to me, these guys were invited to go to Dubai. I had to get the map back to see exactly where that was. But Meat Act arranged a trip for these guys to go over there to set the meat with some of their food buyers and they created a market of meat over there. So the, what they sell over there, it has to be, especially in Muslim countries, so it's a lot of meat. They have to have that. And so they, they found the source of a lot of meat that shipped to their plant. They make beef sticks out of that. They, so then they, they said, well, we had all these orders in Dubai. How do we get it? How do you ship something from Grayson County to Dubai? That's a logistical nightmare. But these are the kind of things you have to think about as a food, food business has potential to grow. So what they did was find an international food distributor and they bought the product from them and in turn they shipped it to Dubai. So it's a small concentrated pallet worth, if the value is pretty high, the product's pretty small, so they can ship a lot of them and make a lot of money. Love, and it's working out for them over there. So that's, that's, that's the reach you can have. So Grayson County is down southwest Virginia, again, 300 miles from here roughly, and they've, they've been able to, to, to reach broad markets. So that's what we can do. I just have to say too, back at that facility, if you're concerned about cleanliness and appearance, that's probably one of the cleanest facilities I've ever been in. It's just immaculate. They keep it clean. But they have, they want to, A, and B, they have to because of the regs. But that's something that could be, could be duplicated in this part of the world. Next is right up the pitch, you have something, yeah, that's a good part of the world. They started out. world. They started out, is that the co-op, the old co-op building?
No, they took out the middle town, they built that building there.
But the one on the, can't remember. Did they build that facility on the slide?
They may have. Well, one of the big profile, definitely, when they moved from middle town.
Right, take a peek behind and see which one that is.
That's middle town.
That's middle town, okay. So middle town, they moved there to this facility in Mount Jackson. So they, that's, that's a pretty big footprint right there. And they have some, that's part of their facility, just keep rolling with that too. That's their, that's their retail facility, that's their storage. And they have, their distributions, it's, it's, they've got some vendors in California, so they're, they're pretty for all. It's almost, I'd say quite a national brand, but certainly a huge reasonable brand. And they do an excellent job. They also buy potatoes from farmers in Chinoval. That's a seasonal product, but it helps that farmer stay sustainable. And they use this product to, for their chips. And then the last, I think this is, I hope this is the last one. This is, no, it's California. Cross Junction, Virginia, has the Shelley Springs cannery. They do custom candy with private label, they've been around for a long, long time. And their, their reach is pretty broad too. And then you know about Falkirk Spines, another slaughter facility over in Falkirk County. I think they harvest about four thousand a year of mixed species cattle, pigs, sheep. Then the last one on there is, obviously, we won't do any cherry-stained aqua farm stuff here, but you can see the beds, they lease these beds from the state of Virginia, they're out in the Bayes, the Ocean Side. And they have a pretty much a international, a national reach. It's a, it's starting about a hundred million dollar business. It's, it's pretty impressive here on Eastern Shore, and I don't think you can stop, you can see that. So those are some things that.
Go ahead.
Say it again.
Where's Cherry's going?
Eastern Shore, Virginia, I can hit them in a minute, a little town. But those are some food businesses that are probably appropriately scaled for, for their reasons and something that we may be able to consider here in future. Hope that gathered.
So, yeah, good, Ken. I have a couple of questions to me. Number one, first question is, I guess, all of these agricultural enterprises here subscribe to some level of gap, okay?
It's, well, they're not gap certified, but there's, FSMA's got an embedded statute down, and that's the Food Quality Protection Act, that's one of the, so if you have gross sales in a certain amount, then you have to comply with the new Food Quality Protect, Food Quality Protection Act standards. And so most people do. And that's really about food safety, paying just food safety throughout the growing process. That's harvesting, that's worker hivesing, that's handling of produce, vegetables, all those kind of things. It's also deals with wildlife, protecting food from wildlife, contaminating wildlife, and things like that.
So another, another question. State of Virginia has seen a restructuring somewhat in their agricultural activities, particularly the dairy business. The dairy business in the state of Virginia has fallen.
It's tainted, right, yeah.
And a number of areas, I mean, what's, what's kind of the numbers that we, it's been tremendous, right?
It's, yes, it's.
And it's devastated like the Chenoval Valley and all these farmers have had to find some other way to sustain themselves.
Yeah, I mean, bankruptcies in farming that are higher now than they did historically. So the farmers are struggling economically across the nation.
You've seen farmers in the valley move into other things, such as greenhouses.
Right.
Vegetable production, greenhouse with all different types of flowers, seasonal items. I guess, what made Rapid County great has disappeared pretty much here in the Alps. What made Rapid County what it is today? And basically, we've moved into basically where carbon-based agriculture asset, capital Graceland, yes. You know, we, we're located, you mentioned Graceland, and all these other areas that are three hundred miles away and they've done all these things. Here we are, very close to major population centers. And if other things were right in terms of capital, in terms of labor, we could do things too. What would not surprise you to see maybe in the next ten years of things like that might be pop up or be requested in Rapid County?
I wouldn't be surprised if, I, I think the, the difficulty though versus these other businesses around these other areas, they, they had an infrastructure. If you don't have the infrastructure, you're not going to grow. So they have great transportation, they're close to shipment points, they have the water and sewer, they have the, the electrical, the electricity need, they have the, they have broadband, they can pick up their cellphone and call a customer wherever they are. Those are limitations here, too, which makes that, we're at a competitive business, and we will be. But there's, you know, the sky's the limit. We're mostly a beef or pasture-based industry and some of those Graceland Natural models, and they've worked really hard out there. They've, they've gone out and hired the right people, read the right names, and they're always marketing, because it's, it's so competitive. You come into this, this agribusiness just about without a lot of, how can I say it? It's just competitive. So there's everybody that's making beef sticks now, so how do you take your product from another? And so it's always those kind of concerns. Seems like what we have here now that works reasonably well for us is the tourism, the agri-turism and the, the farm businesses based on, that take advantage of that, like the wineries, breweries, distilleries, those kind of things. What will probably work better is some combination to do. We're trying to figure out how we can work with these other food companies, these perfectly scaled food companies, so that we can train them to do. And so if we do that and we create a value chain with them, then there's more economic return to our farmers and there's more reason for our farmers to grow the sale of land. They are, no economic incentive to do that. It's a lifestyle incentive, it's a great life, but there's really economic incentive. Just like the example, the dairy farmers, it's across the board. So it's, it's, I hate to say that, but that's, that's kind of where we are. It's all about efficiencies. We talked a little bit about that today, but it's, and it's not, that's the name of the game in just about every business, whether it's on the computer or whatever, whatever the case may be.
So, so Rapid County, the capital kind of still staying here, and you got one slaughter facility here. And you talk to any of the slaughterhouses within a mile of here, they're backed up six months.
Yep.
For more, for more slaughter. Is there a tremendous amount of federal and state regulations to, to prevent a smaller house?
Yes, it's a fair amount. And then not only after you get permits, there's, there's requirement that a state or federal respect a food present, or at least respect a meat before it's available consumption. And you have to pay for that person to be there by the hour, improvise in all this, improvise restaurants and all those kind of things. So those are the regulations, those are the barriers that prevent people from entering that. So if you want to enter that and have a capital to do that, you might, you might have a little bit of competitive edge, but all these things have to work together to make a difference. So, so what we mostly have now is direct-to-consumer sales. And that's easy to get in and easy, coming to easy to get out, there's not a lot of capital involved.
I was very surprised to see the Adams, which is just five thousand square feet.
But roughly, it's a, I mean, the house, the building, the barn sales margin that has the slaughter facility and the processing areas, yeah, I think you said sixty-five or sixty-five roughly, it is a ballpark, not really high, not exactly on record. Hope that gives you some idea of what, hope that was helpful or not. And anyway, it's, thank you.
Any more questions? Yep. Give us one thing that I'm always scared of, maybe you can shed some logistics here. I guess Page County has, I've heard, six hundred chicken houses. And Chinoval Valley of course is poultry, good count. In terms of groundwater quality, across the mountain, nitrates and disposal of manure and all this stuff, there's, I was, there's chicken houses, turkey houses in Orange County. And I was shocked to see, I didn't know it, but there's, there's a new poultry facility that they're raising turkeys in a big new turkey house between Bristol'sburg and Summerfield. It's not really a normal process. I mean, it's hard to not, to not, not stop these type of facilities from coming in, but how likely are the logistics that we could possibly see one of them in Rapid County?
I don't, I mean, I don't think it was, I don't, I don't think they're trying to escape it, to be honest. So, and it's, that's, I wish everybody's thinking this better than I could, because she, she understands that business and been around for a long, long time. But, you know, the difference over there too is the, the challenges, if, so you have the park, the park, the limits, it's helpful for groundwater contamination, so it's probably from a pollution, groundwater pollution point of view, better to have those houses here. But from a logistical point of view, you know, the rails and the grain and all that kind of stuff, it's in Harrisonburg, slaughter facilities are there, so there's no real reason.
But if they're in Orange County, it's long distance from Orange and Harrisonburg to Rapid County.
Yeah, I'm not sure whether there's, I know there's, there's, I'm not sure how it's, I'm not sure what companies there's, I don't get over ready for those. But I was, I just don't, I don't think there's a lot of potential back here in the future. I just don't see that. I think it's mostly, again, the mid, small to mid-sized farms, the small to mid-size, I'd say marriage businesses, things like that, they've been complimented there. I think cheese could really be a, we don't have bears. And we've had theirs in the past, it's not like they haven't in the past, it's just they didn't, it's just, we're not able to sustain themselves. And a lot of that had to do with the pathogens that are associated with the making of cheese and things like that, on patrol, to get out, get out of hand and do that business. So, hope that makes some sense.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you for that. Thank you very much. It was very helpful and pertinent. The, it sounds like a lot of these examples are activities that are associated with agriculture on agricultural land. I think in our discussion, what we're talking about is, you know, the zoning aspects of this. Can you speak at all to whether these are typically, you know, with the zoning?
Yeah, it's only Graceland has their zone. So, whatever goes, goes. I'm not suggesting that's a good thing, but they, they have those zones there. These others are, the, the other, the Franklin County Dairy Works, the Homestead, the county worked with them. They were, they were an existing dairy farm, but their limitation was water, well water. So the county actually ran water lines for the, to their facilities so they could continue to, it was a partnership they wanted, they wanted to work. And so they were working with other dairies and the, the localities made sure that they were having the, by the infrastructure. Those are a couple of examples, some of the others I really don't know. But a lot of those like Rapid, they're located in an industrial area, like, and it's, it's designed to support businesses on that. So Chinoval County, I don't know if they're done yet at all, but they provided for some of those, those type of business, businesses to exist and expand. How do you speak to that better, Michael? That's, that's my impression anyway.
Anybody else have any questions?
I just want to say thanks, Ken, for your time and putting this together, for your helpful information, Ken. Thanks.
Thanks for having me.
Before you go, I want to answer some questions.
You know what?
What, what question?
One of the, as Mr. Ley, I guess, to tag on to that, some of the things that we're talking about doing, I mean, obviously, there's a business side to it, with the planting and helping side is, is arguing for it. And that is, you know, regulating this in the agriculture zone, which is pretty much the predominant area of the county. As I looked around various adjoining counties, all the way down to Alamo Marl and DeClark and Falkier and so forth, and Madison, most of the counties, and some of them in value too, that most of the counties that allow some kind of food processing, slaughterhouses, canneries, that kind of thing, only allow them in industrial districts and not out in any other districts. And if, and I guess the proposal, and that's all it is, really for discussion at this point, is if, if we had broader, you know, more permissive use, I think the only place in Rapid County that's an industrial at this point is the down there, it's Sperryville, and where the Chutney plant is, and I don't think there is any other industrial area in the county. So in terms of allowing it perhaps in the agricultural zone, or somewhere, you know, out in, not, not, not limited to industrial, what do you think, if you do, if you have thought about it, is the appropriate way, the most appropriate way to restrict it or limit it or put some, I mean, in terms of should it have a minimal lot size, should it have to be based on square footage, or how many employees, or some, or what?
I don't have any thoughts at all about that. And I don't, I think that once you start prescribing those kind of things, the box of people will end up for growth, for pistol. And so if you can only grow up to five thousand square foot and your business grows, then what? You leave the county and then you're stuck with, you know. The other, the other thought again is, you, you've got to think about your infrastructure. If that's.
We have no infrastructure.
Now, that's.
That's two eleven, that's it.
So that's, that's, I mean, that's really going to drive, drive it as much as anything.
Or water.
Well, yeah, that's by many of them. So the whole inclusion kind of infrastructure, they serve with water.
Yep. And as far as the facilities themselves, you did speak about some of the state and federal regulations. So I assume that if we put something in the ordinance that whatever, that whatever they do or what they build has to meet the applicable regulations.
Yeah, those are all state, state brands, it's still a super state, and they can do those, they have to comply.
Right. So that's, in other words, they're, that's pretty much what it covered if we just incorporate whatever the applicable state regs for whatever they're in, industry or business is.
That's my change.
All right, we've got stuff like set back screening, all that, I mean, that's really on case-by-case basis. So, I don't know, those are the, those are the kind of parameters that.
That's just on my edge, please.
Okay, well, I again, also want to thank, we have the commission and the public, thank you very much for the time and putting that together, and it's very helpful.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any thoughts on where you want to go with this?
I might can take it off on something you said, because I didn't, I tried to look through, I guess I looked at all here, Colpepper, and all of them. I didn't get too close to anything that looks like what this is supposed to be here, because the means that what you're getting at is it's only.
Yeah.
But it's not even, yeah, I didn't even, didn't find food process, I mean, there's distribution and wholesaling, seems like it's a categorized otherwise, but I guess I was hoping maybe somebody, you did a lot more research on that. Could you speak to the structural aspect of this?
I really, I really couldn't, I couldn't really find anything specific in terms of these additional standards. So the only thing that I really found was, and I lived out Page, Michelle, but, but it just, it's, it's permitted use in industrial zones. And it doesn't have these, but they don't, or their, their licenses either aren't structured like ours, or they just have the general conditions. And it doesn't have these, but they don't date, or their ordinances either aren't structured like ours, or they just have the general conditions and general standards that they could impose on anything, like, like pretty much we do when they, but most of them were permitted by right. And, but only in the industrial zone, or maybe in the commercial zone.
Or some of these are.
So the stuff that I have here in lines eight down twenty-four on page two of the, of the draft, I just basically crypt those from some other special standards and adapted them. And there they are, I mean, they're for discussion, like I said, very happy, you'll be happy to see I changed all the SPs back to SEs. And, but, turn it now, the order of something appeals asked about, you can say, I did that under, under pressure. To rest.
We're talking about, you're talking about your item two, the food process.
Right. The second, the second one. So, I mean, the definitions and all that stuff, I can't remember where that came from.
Even the definitions, the, the only definition, I, it looked like you took the food definition from the state code.
I did.
But, but the, I didn't even see definitions for processing or canary, I mean, slaughterhouse, what I've seen is treated differently usually than the others. So, I guess, I still wasn't quite seeing a complete treatment of it, you know.
I didn't find any either, and I, so, but there it is. And I mean, if you think it should be broken into separate categories, I, you know, as, I guess it depends on, you know, does, the trade off is, does it really, is it worth the effort to have a whole bunch of special standards for the two or three? I mean, I guess there's food manufacturing or processing, there's, you know, if you want to say slaughterhouses are separate, you want to say that breweries are exempt, so, and wineries are exempt, so, we can't really regulate them. So, you know, given what he said about our limitations for Rappahannock, it's really, it's really worth it to try and, you know, regulate it down to that point or.
But maybe we should look at some sort of size. I, I know a family that, the front of a small dairy over in Falky Air County, and I don't know if you're familiar with the, the partners of dairy milk production. They have to do so much, they produce more than that, they actually get penalized, it's like the farmers pour it out on the gallon, or give it, or they pour it out on the ground, or they pay costs with it, or whatever. If they produce too much to get penalized, they don't produce, produce nothing in penalized. So they, they retire pouring out perfectly good milk on the ground in order to keep the amount of money they were gathering that they were supposed to get. So they, they went to cheese production. And it's a very small operation, and they, they, they use a product that they order, basically throw it out and they make the cheese. And to the side of their facility, I don't think the county really had any involvement in it.
Well, I think in, when the ordinance is now, if it's on site, if you're, if you're processing something, and that's, that's really all, that's the only food processing right now under the current ordinance that is allowed anywhere in the county, is processing on site. You know, on-site agriculture products, and I think that's by right. Right? So, what you just described, you wouldn't need any permit. But what we're talking about is like slaughterhouse or something to do meat processing, that would be, you know, where other farmers could bring their stuff instead of taking it down to Falky Air or some other place, they could do it here. But I mean, the question is, is it economically feasible to do that?
Are they going to have farmers that can help do that for the cheese? I don't know, there's probably a lot of farmers that throw that out. But they, they don't do that here, but.
You know, the size of their operation, they could do that here. So, I, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't know what it ought to be, I mean, I think it ought to be, I definitely agree, I'd have some provision for it, it won't be allowed. And the question is, how specific do you want to get with these special standards? I mean, you don't have to have special standards for it at all. You could have it just under the general conditions and say that they, the board of either zoning appeals or board supervisors can put whatever conditions they deem fit about hours of operation and all those things, but that's already in there in 170-52. So you could just leave it dependent.
It does seem to me that rather than try to imagine all the different possible categories, one way to provide some kind of, you know, general, that should be on scale of some sort, but if you love some intent, then you're, I guess as long as you provide some avenue for additional possibility of growth, then with additional consideration. But the concern I have about being too general is that we don't know exactly what's going to come in, and it'll be this, maybe we didn't anticipate.
Right. Well, like Mr. Ley said, you could have, I don't know that that's going to happen, because I don't, again, you've got the infrastructure, you've got no railroad, you've got no public water or sewer treatment facilities. So, you're not going to get Tyson's or some big chicken plant to come in here, I don't think, but.
Well, it's interesting, I don't recall, I don't recall a year, in my town here, that, if I take through this, that anybody's come in with something that we didn't, didn't fit, and somehow they had to, that turned away or something. Anybody, anybody cite an example of something like that that might be structured?
Well, the Chuckney thing was kind of, yeah, that got done under the distribution. But that's been resolved, so I guess, I mean, I think that's actually the genesis of this referral from the board supervisor.
I think Cole came in about fifteen, twenty years ago, and wanted, it was kind of, you know, not actually producing, but he wanted to do his culinary school on Harris Island, damage to portions. And teach people how to cook. And a couple of hours, so the question I put to John Carter, he goes, John, if Mr. Cole leaves, what are we going to have? He said, well, you're going to have a restaurant in the agricultural areas, which is going to happen. So, they just put that some kind of determination, you know, in Cole, because, you know, draw that occasion, you know, to him.
Well, I mean, I think that's the issue with a lot of these type of things, if, if you allow it in the, I mean, we, everybody knows, so, I'm being advocate on looking at section 170-36, which will be created from Falky Air and they grew it from Falky Air. And I see we just have a lot of uses, even what I copied there in the part that, that lets for the, the silver part, which I forgot what I'm going to get there next. So, I mean, I cut out about half of that list, but there's stuff like stadiums in there, prisons and all that. Well, in Fairfax County, again, that's where they, if they were going to have that, they don't want to have in the residential district or in downtown Fairfax, and we put it out in the hinterlands where the population is pretty sparse, comparatively speaking. And we, I would say, well, I honestly copied that, I mean, I think, if you feel on the scene, a lot of people in this auditorium, somebody put in a special exception permit for either, either a stadium or a prison. And, and in the agriculture zone, I think, you know, still be having some interest about that, but, you know, is that really appropriate in Rappahannock County? And yet, we have uses like that, that we've not in the zoning ordinance, but something like this that arguably is supportive of our goal of keeping this an agricultural county. You know, we don't have any provision for things that we ought to have, at least for some of our locals.
What's the reasoning to do an SE instead of an SP?
Well, the original intent of all that was, if, if it's very local and only affects sort of the neighborhood, it should be a special permit used to go to the board of zoning appeals. And if it's got a broader, I think that's actually what the board says, if it's got a broader sort of county-wide impact, it would go to the board supervisors. My own experience is if it goes to board of zoning appeals, sometimes they actually apply some zoning standards, and if it goes to the board supervisors, it's completely political. And, but that's, you know, that depends on who's on the board or at any given time. So, that's the way it was, but I mean, there's been some talk on and off about eliminating that distinction, giving everything to the board supervisors, or giving it all back, I mean, up until eighty-five, but all, all the special permits went to the BCA.
I think, I think if you go down this road into agricultural manufacturing, food manufacturing, whatever, I, I think that is probably a political decision in the direction that the county would go in based on input from the board, I think. You'd rather see the board handle and balance that decision in the BCA.
Well, I have mixed emotions about not the BCA reps.
You're an attorney, but you're an attorney on a hold of power.
I do, if.
The practice determination, what's against that?
But neither board is.
What, what, if I didn't.
So, I have a question, Ben, Michelle, or some of the other, should have been around this now, is there, if somebody wanted to start an apple packing, one of the apple packing businesses up again, but the apples weren't grown on that site, would that now be prohibited, or would there be?
I think there's no provision for it. So, anything that is not specifically allowed in that chart is not permitted, presumably not permitted.
But if it's not a permitted use, what, what are they going to do?
Well, I think you have the storage and distribution aspect, if all you're doing is storing history, that's like the Chuck situation, right? And that's how that ends up getting.
True.
Where, you know where that is?
Not off the top of my head, so. It's in 170-36?
It's under, yeah.
I mean, it says, somewhere it says.
It's under agricultural, report of culture, forestry and associated, so processing, storage and sale of agricultural products grown on, but it's grown on premises, so.
On premises, right.
Only for growing on premises.
That's what we're talking about. And I think that's the only, that's what's actually, yeah.
That's, I'm sorry, that is G.
Building on the, sorry to do that. Well, there's ethanol, that got it, great. And the next one after that, processing, storage and sale of agricultural products grown on premises. But it's all lumped in together, it's permitted in conservation agriculture RR5. And it's a special permit in R2 and residential village, but not commercial village, I'm not sure that makes any sense. Anyway, so that's it?
Yeah, obviously, I mean, that, that seems to me that there was something that, you know, we would, we would like people to be able to do some processing. I, there are different questions, there's, right, there's, no more questions, I guess. I, first of all, this might need to be separated up a little bit more, for example, if meat production is, or slaughtering or processing is included in that. I question whether that should also be allowed in village, commercial, commercial village, commercial general, highway commercial, I mean, having a, having a small family operation, for example, on Flint Hill or even at the Diorl's Warehouse there, I don't know what that sounds like, Diorl's Warehouse there, but in Flint Hill, next to Settles. I mean, that.
Village.
Yeah, that could be. But I can see, you know, having, having food processing, but having a slaughterhouse next to before and after Sperryville would be, would be a really different thing. So we might, we might want to consider separating these out from fashion, and I, you know, trying to figure out, for farmers in our county, which is obviously what some of them are really interested in, just chatting with some folks. I think for our farmers, they don't, the one I talked about, they just didn't feel like there was enough livestock here to support it, if it had a, just, just around the corner. It would have to be, it would have to pull in meat or products from other areas. So that would have to be, you know, there'd have to be some scale to that. They felt the, the kind of scale you'd use for that might be different than what you would use for, you know, apple production. It might be the number of animals, might be, you know, as opposed to the size of the acreage or the, or the amount of employees. So, I think you might, you might have to, have to dig down a little bit into this unless you're just going to keep it super broad. I also wondered why we would have, just the way it's written, and I know we're, we're just discussing it, but setback hours of operation and impacts on the way that maybe you like to put that to that. I don't know why that's, that consideration of that, or imposing those kind of structures would be limited to resource preservation areas and residential zones, only because obviously you have houses in agricultural areas, so I think those, you know, if you're going to have an operation.
And where, where you come, at number four?
Yeah, you have it, you have it.
Well, resource preservation is agricultural conservation or residential zone, so where else would it be?
Next, a, in a joint property located in a resource preservation or residential zone. So that makes it sound like that's the only place you can consider, is that fact, does that what you mean by that, or am I reading that wrong? In granting.
Well, let's say, I mean, if you're a commercial village, you're obviously going to be, no matter where you are in the commercial village area, you're going to be right next to pretty much some other residential property, residential zone. Be immediately adjacent or next to it, commercial general, you're going to be pretty much probably, if you're, well, if you're surrounded by the commercial general properties, which aren't any big commercial zones except out by the color of the bank. Right down the road here, several, okay, if you're in the midst of that, you probably don't have a problem. But if you're on the edge of it, and then you're border up against an agriculture zone, so that'll catch that. Industrial, same thing. But the two industrial zones we have are very small, they're really kind of one property, each one of them maybe two. And so they're immediately adjacent, no matter which side you go to, to a resource preservation zone. Highway commercial, same thing, that's basically a strip that's one lot deep all along the highway. So you're going to be adjacent to either resource preservation or the village residential zone. So, I mean, I mean, if you want to broaden that out, or you want to take that part out, or whatever, I mean, that's, the other thing I think we should be, obviously, look at is, that's in the context of section 170-52, which is the general standards, which kind of covers the same stuff. So this is, like, just a little, little more, I mean, personally, I, my experience on the BCA is if you don't put it in the special standards of this, they tend to not pay much attention to it. So that was an effort, and I can't remember where I tripped that from, but I tripped it from somewhere else in the ordinance, it pretty much says the same thing.
Yeah, I don't think it says that you're, you're not putting it in a residential system.
If it's near one, you have to take that.
Exactly.
I know we're bouncing all over the place, and it'll probably bounce us again, but one of the things, you know, the way the current use is structured with the reference to agricultural products grown on site, I have more comfort with reference to agricultural products than I do to all manner of food products. So one thought that I think would be a good step forward would be to build from this, it's already here, and have a category for processing, storage and sale of agricultural products, period. Then take out the provisions only.
Or maybe that on-site is permitted, and then off-site, and have a different category, different than like SE or something.
Exactly.
Though.
That seems to me to be a shorter path to progress.
Okay.
Are you sure that, yes, maybe you want?
Well, in other words, I think what Gary suggested is go down to 170-36, A to G. If we have processing, storage and sale of agricultural products grown on premises, and you've got three P's and two SPs, and that's it. All right, just put on another category in there, that's exactly the same example. another category in there, that's exactly the same except all, except strike grown on premises and just say all premises, and then maybe change the P's and the S's to some other SEs.
SEs with your...
And then we'll put an X out in the box there, you know, for a certain...
And make up your additional requirements.
And have the additional requirements there, and, I don't know, maybe, maybe then we don't need any of this.
I mean, what other products, what other food menu if I had?
I don't know, but I don't want to try to imagine.
Well, I'm just saying, what other, what food products are there that are agricultural?
Well, confectioners, you know, you start getting into, you know, sugars or, I, I don't know, you know...
No, it's still there to do that, huh?
Well, not full of vital, I guess, but, you know, that's, I guess, the issue, it just seems...
Well, what sugar did you say?
Talking about, um, we look at the definition with food, food's all kinds of carbs, and that's...
Sure, it's all, or, you know, something, something that's start, more official food.
Our, our purpose here is not to develop, uh, you know, I mean, the focus here is on agricultural products, and I think the constraint we're feeling is that it shouldn't be limited to what you grow on site, so rather than try to...
Right, so just, just do, repeat the thing like we talked about.
Yeah, like, you know...
All right. I don't know, I'm fine with that. Is that the consensus, is that, that'll be a lot easier?
I hear Mr. Shul and nodding over here, but he's not...
You're here and nodding.
Yeah, I am nodding. I think that's an easier path.
It's definitely an easier path, and it's tempting, I'll say that, um...
Well, let's, just, because, just make sure everybody's on the same page. Uh, let's, let me flip over and just refresh everyone's recollection. What's in one seventy fifty-two, general standards? First one is, it will not adversely affect the use or development of neighboring property shall be in accordance with applicable, Mr. Craig's, the location, size, height of building structures, walls and fences, nature and extent of screening, buffering, landscaping shall be such, the use will not hinder or discourage appropriate development or use of adjacent or nearby land or buildings, or impair the value thereof. Well, you could drive whatever you want through that one, in terms of hour, hours of operation, but here is one about hours of operation, you can do all kinds of whatever you need to do on a case-by-case basis. The second one is, it won't be such, but pedestrian vehicular traffic generated will not be hazardous or conflict with, blah, blah, blah. Third one is adequate utility drainage, parking, loading, other facilities, great. Uh, D signs, B, future impact shall be considered and addressed in establishing a time limit on the permit, uh, so forth, F, proposed use won't be such, air quality, surface and groundwater quality are not degraded, G, proposed use will not result in unsafe conditions to the community facilities, existing land, uh, police, fire protection, congestion and travel and rescue, H, won't cause undue impact on sanitary landfill solid waste, I, proposed use will not cause undue impact on aesthetic or seating qualities of immediate area, J, it's in, it won't be in conflict with the compliance, so, and, and then, one seventy fifty-three, conditions and restrictions, the VCA and board respectively, blocking that block, and the conditions may include but not deliver the following hours of operation, access, protection of surface water, lighting, so as not to adversely affect adjacent or nearby property owners, adequate sewer water, sound limitations to ensure peaceful enjoyment of neighboring properties, location, size, height of buildings, walls, fences, buffer, landscaping and buffer yard, uh, covenants and homeowners associations, timing or phasing, underground utilities, control of smoke, dust and odor, so it's all, it's all already there, or an awful lot of it is already there, if only they will do it, the trouble is that, I mean, I don't can tell you, only film those, how many zoning meetings we've been to where there's a special use permit, and everybody gets up and they have a big public hearing, and twenty or thirty people, or fifty people speak, and then somebody says, "Well, I think this is really good for the county, so I move to approve it," and we don't talk about any of those things, they don't go through the list, they don't make the findings, and then it just gets seconded and voted in, or if they put something in, they put some of them in, but they really, I mean, by rights, and since Mr. Henry brought it up, if you're talking about a court thing, if, if somebody, a neighbor, wants to challenge one of those permits, and the board in considering it didn't go down that list and make the appropriate findings that satisfies this and satisfies that and all that, and then all those things that I just read, uh, it's subject to challenge, because you could say, "Well, the board was supposed to consider those things," and nobody's, they never discussed it, they just moved to approve it, so, having said all of that, I, I'm fine with what, that is a lot easier to do it.
Just to, just to put, I, just to make sure I'm following what that whole exercise was about, that's the difference in their mind between making a special permit versus a special exception.
No, they were, those, those conditions, all that list goes to either one.
I know, but your point is, the supervisors tend to just say yes or no, and the, and the VCA at least maybe is a little bit more inclined to...
Well, they were when I was there, but now I don't know what's going to happen. I used to remind them periodically that we're supposed to go down the list.
Well, I guess you'll still remind them in your newer capacity, uh...
Well, uh, from here, I'll certainly do it this way.
Well, what I hear...
I mean, we're supposed to do it too.
Right, and we, we, I think we, we definitely...
Well, I, I guess the way I interpret it, what you said on it's my, oh, my flex, my own, conditions that you have, but just as, just like, is that if you have demo standards like this, they, it happens, as you say, if you have more specific standards, doesn't there more likely to look at those specific standards, but the only reason I would, you know, hesitate, uh, to suggest that this life is made is, um, is that processing something where we grow on-site in the county, we all know that that is totally an automatic type of limitation right there, and I guess, hey, that, you know, whatever, kind of scale limitation, if you will, when, and, and I, and I think you're right in this, if I can be right, it's kind of, you know, you want to encourage things, you're, you're, this is specifically intended potentially encouraging things that are not grown on-site, that are, are larger than that, larger scale than that, potentially, so that larger scale is, um, you know, small scale, like we're doing cutting, is great, larger scale may not be so great, and, um, again, it may be self-regulated in the sense that we don't have adequate infrastructure potentially for large scale, but who knows, if we don't impose those standards, then they're, then they, they may not effectively exist, so that's, I guess, my only concern, um, just, just saying, I'm not imposing any standards, you know, I...
Well, I guess the next question, what, well, what should, I mean, I, I took a stab at it, and I put the four or five on here, give six, so the minimum lot size, well, everybody pretty much is like, "Oh, I don't know." I mean, what, what should it be, I mean, again, it depends on, it's hard to write if it wants...
Yeah, it depends on what you're processing too, exactly, herbs, nobody cares, you're...
The minimum lot size for this army district is looking, a lot of people are processing herbs right in their basement, so, you know... Well, I, I think that if there's one parameter, and I, and I tend to agree with the issue, that maybe it's not just one entity, if there, if it touches one, you know, um, non-on-site scale, but if we're going to take one parameter to be the square footage, it'd be the one that would be most versatile and most...
I, I, I tend to agree, but, I, like, the question is, again, it depends on what, if it's a slaughterhouse, or it's a meat processing, or a food, that's one thing, if...
Well, but I mean, if it's...
If it's a cannery, like we're trying to, but I, you know, I, I don't, I don't know, and so I don't know what it should be, and, uh, it depends on the lot size, what if somebody has a hundred-acre lot, and you want to put it in the middle of their farm? I mean, what, what, that's, I'm not comfortable with what should be.
I, I think, where I was, was trying to at least create one category for processing, storage, et cetera, including from, stuff from on-site, I think what this is, issue is introduced is maybe we have, have, uh, you know, up to ten thousand square feet is one category, and bigger is, is something else, and I could see a logic in trying to put some kind of size limit, and I don't think we could go through all permutations of lot size, built-in size, type of use, et cetera, but if there's one, there's one thing, it's probably that would be, you know, most to the point is, or the square footage of the...
Well, you, usually in the zoning market, so you have your, uh, like, medical facilities, you've got your schools, that either go by square footage, or the number of students, or the number of beds, or something like that, so you could do that, and that typically what they did in here, if you want to be consistent, is, for example, schools less than, I can't remember, twenty, twenty-five students, and then more than twenty-five, so one is an SP, whereas if it's more than twenty-five students, or twenty, whatever it is, it goes to SEs, the supervisors, same thing with nursing care type facilities, it's a, that's a certain number of beds, it's an SP, so you could do that, so we'll do it only based on square footage, not on...
It's just, you know, schools, obviously, students is a parameter, I'm not sure, employees might be another parameter for what we're talking about here, but I think square footage can do it, because if it's a square footage limit, you're only going to get so many people in.
I also think we, we...
But the question is, well, what, what should the break point be?
So, again, I, I think meat processing is likely to be more, more objectionable in certain circumstances than apple processing, um, so for example, having the potential for, for slaughtering in a commercial village, commercial general, or higher commercial, doesn't seem to me probably appropriate, um, but, anyway, I don't know what the...
That's on the road.
Um...
That's, that's the other thing, you've got the paved road thing, I put that in, I just made that up, I mean, is that appropriate or not? Personally, I think so, that's another good way to limit it, because if it's on paved road, well, that, that used to be more than meats now, because there's nothing on paved road, there's a lot less than there used to be, but that's, I mean, I hear what you're saying about highway commercial, but again, that's, that's, you're getting a little bit too far into the, the woods, I think when they, when somebody files for it, and they're in one zone or another, if it's objectionable, that gives the neighboring landowners and anybody else, and the planning commission that say, "Well, yeah, in this zone, generally we say it's okay, but this particular location, no," I don't think that's appropriate, because you've got three or four houses within, you know, fifty or seventy-five or a hundred fifty feet, and the answer's no, so I think you have to leave it, if you try to get too specific, you're going to be sorry later on.
Well, I, I don't know, we're pretty, we're kind of specific already, I mean, we're allowing in, in industrial, um, we're not allowing in residential, uh, anyway, I just, and that's what I think, I think, I think that it's a different kind of, uh, those kind of intended, a different kind of animal, um...
I think, I do think some of the counties have a special distinction for slaughterhouses, so that would be another way to do it, you could have slaughterhouses be their own things, and, and all these other things would...
But I mean, in recommend, that's what we got.
Meat, I'm just trying to have, so...
So now we want to have a separate category for slaughterhouses?
Well, we don't have a whole, ten years, well, we might, we might have a whole order processing, we're, we're...
I reckon when we do that, we'll change the... All right, does anybody have any thoughts before we move on, on, well, what those ought to be? What the, what the, which zones it should be allowed in or not allowed in?
It is possible we could do it, if Gary suggests we could, you know, one seventy thirty-six, we could just...
I mean, look, let, not that many, let's go through, so the off-site, we're not changing what's there, we're going to have an off-site category, processing, uh, pork processing, and sale of agricultural products, uh, not grown on premises, other than slaughterhouses, okay? Other than meat, thank you.
Meat processing.
Meat processing, okay, so, conservation? Yes, S E, S P, or what?
I, I would say default should be SE.
SE, default, agriculture SE, these are going to be less than five thousand, and then greater than five thousand, yes?
Like the five thousand one?
I mean, we're not going to change what, or who's doing the, who's doing the, the permit, it's all going to be SEs, there's no point in having a break of less than five thousand or more, unless you're not going to let it in certain categories, in certain zones, so, less than five...
Yeah, I don't, five seems to maybe small to me, I'm thinking ten, but...
I don't know.
John, Mr. Henry, you're quiet over there, if you can see your...
Just listening.
All right, rural residential, I say no.
No.
R two, no, residential village, no, commercial village, no, I don't know, yes, no?
No, I, no, I don't, I don't see a commercial village, of course...
All right, commercial general, SE, highway commercial, SE.
No, 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 I don't feel like we could have the either of those, to me.
What?
The others, the, the other...
What I, what I have to do with meat, we'll do less than five thousand, other than...
Meat, right. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, farm, no, fair plan, required, okay, more greater than five thousand, we're not going to do that, we're going to do slaughterhouses, so meat, so the meat, not at all in conservation, agriculture, SE, meat.
Meat should be allowed.
So no meat, conservation? Agriculture, evaluated, okay, but it should be in the agriculture district.
Should be prostitution, too.
Yeah, it should be in the way of breaking the law, yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Shul.
Type small, SE.
Let, let the supervisor sort of... RR, no, R two, no, R three, no, C two, B, commercial village, no, commercial general, SE, so we're doing the same thing?
No, we took out the commercial...
Commercial general...
No?
Commercial general, no, industrial, you'd be, you'd be, yeah, SE.
So I think what we're taking out is the highway commercial and the commercial general, okay, for that one.
And it didn't have any commercial village.
Okay, or, or, we're on meat now, right?
Yep, oh, sorry, so it's exactly the same.
We're keeping it in agriculture.
Keeping it in agriculture.
What?
Keeping it in agriculture, yeah, SE, so...
Which is, uh, so nowhere, it's not going to be permitted by law anywhere, for industrial...
So we're doing small meat now?
We're doing just meat, like...
Meat, those are, meat is a term.
But meats itself, the other one's less than five.
Okay, five thousand, so to make, make sure I understand, so the food processing, uh, less than five thousand, where is it not permitted at all, or is it, in all categories?
It's not, we're not going to have any decided, we're not going to have any decided in here, because it's all going to go to the border supervisor, and I'm doing SE anyway, so here I'm going to do it again, so this is off-site processing of whatever it is they grow somewhere else and bring it in to be processed, except meat, so it's S, uh, conservation, SE, agriculture, SE, RR five, no, R two, no, residential village, no, commercial village, no, commercial general, SE, highway commercial, SE, and industrial, SE, frankly, I think it would be SE if it were probably...
So, let me ask you this question, all right? Ask this question, in theory.
Yeah.
So, I, uh, I come in and I want to buy the old, the old property, the old corner, it's very little, and I want to turn that existing facility there to a butcher, and go into, I want to make cheese there, I want to take the building, I produce there, and make cheese there, that's not allowed?
No, that would, that would put an SE in.
I don't, my, SE in the court village is okay.
But isn't there also adaptive use, opening?
No, because adaptive use is...
For existing...
May I understand, though, about the on-site, I guess the company's grown on-site stuff in the commercial village, am I wrong there?
Yeah, I'm not sure, Mr. Henry...
All right, so SE, we added that.
Fine, okay. So now, now I can make my cheese?
Now I can make your cheese, I hate that.
You make my cheese, I'll break you some.
All right, so now, the slaughterhouses, to review, you wanted to hear, you're going to let slaughterhouses in SE, in, in conservation, these are all SEs, conservation, agriculture, and, and that industrial, that's it, and the second one, okay?
We're looking at, I just, we're looking at conservation, I was, you changed your pages on that.
Well, we're, we're going to, let's, let's, let's do it and get it over and have a public hearing, I have reservations about that one, so...
But, yeah, so, what, what is the standard for conservation?
Backup, situations.
Don't you know your name?
Yeah, he's owning in this district. Purpose and intent of districts, one seventy dash thirty-five. The conservation district contains those mountains which are environmentally sensitive as opposed to the mountains that are not environmentally sensitive. You know which ones I'm talking about. Have physical limitations. What? And contain much of the county's timber resources. The regulations are designed with emphasis on the conservation of those areas to minimize potential adverse environmental impact while providing for compatible, very low-density residential uses.
Yeah, I think we're going to get a lot of screen and roll about that one.
I, you know, I mean, the conservation district, which I think is a kind of a state.
I see the way this is going to be used. If somebody comes in and they got a hundred acres and they want to build a slaughterhouse, for example, or whatever's a slaughterhouse. And they, they come onto their property with a road and they, and their road is something that crosses a piece of conservation property to get to, to build the site for the slaughterhouse. Well, that's part of the site plan, part of where they're going, so you kick it out for that. I'm not proposing to build a slaughterhouse on top of guys around it. But I think if a person has a mixed shoe setting, that if they need to cross that conservation or incorporate it, something that they may use the water for the conservation, drill a well or something like that, or conservation plan, that should be not a possible hangnail that would hold up.
I don't think it would be.
Well, we don't think, but you don't know. It's going to be on the, on the D C A at that time. What is it?
The use, the use is.
Okay, well, the supervisor, I think it's just.
Or, or worse, you do know.
I don't think you could totally go to slaughterhouse on a pure conservation property that it's used.
In other ways, I think it would go by where the actual slaughterhouse is. And the other factor is what you're, is I assume if you have a slaughterhouse, you're going to have trucks bringing in the cows, at least slaughtered digs or whatever, and then you're going to have some other trucks bringing up the finished product, so you're going to have traffic and all that. But again, it could be, I mean, I.
Basically, look right now, look where the only slaughterhouse in the county is. It's on Sherwood Lane, it's on Crowder Road, Crowder Road. It's a three-quarters, half a mile or more off. And laborers get along, you know.
It's your agriculture. What is, what is this zone here? Is it agriculture? Okay, so that would be fine.
So, I mean, it works.
I think the idea, I mean, to me, it's odd that there are commercials that have things like that. But to the extent that that's a thing, obviously, you can do things on one part of your property that you can't do on the other, otherwise, the whole concept doesn't make any sense.
Well, of course, what if that was a couple thousand acres? All one big truck. All right. I guess we're not putting this out for the public hearing next month yet, so we'll come back. I'll do that and write it up and make it look pretty, and we can talk about it again. So if everybody, then everybody can have their say. All right, I think we, we got through the, what do you call it? Wire list. Have you all had a chance to look at what I did with the renewable energy section?
I don't, we're not, we're not going to discuss the wireless tonight.
So you did that last time.
I did think we did it last time, and I did give, although late, and I apologize for that, but there, there's a handout here with a number of changes. Right. I don't know if you want to get to that time later. My concern, my first concern with that was that comparing both our first ordinance and some of the ordinance changes that were proposed, it doesn't look like those were, those took into account some of the recent amendments to the Virginia Code. So some of them may be in conflict with those, those recent changes to the Virginia Code. Otherwise, I just, your section, section K is kind of.
Or, do you want to just go through this?
Uh, I don't have an answer to all of them, I would say, and I don't think I caught necessarily all of them, but I can raise some of those that's convenient, or we can only delete it.
I mean, it's not so. I don't know, what do you want to do?
I think she's going to work, I'd suggest she introduce this. I, you're probably going to have some sense of whether you did or didn't think of this first five minutes, if we could get through that. And I think we do have the minutes to try to go through it. We moved the dance later to meet, so just.
Well, we've got this to go through and we've got the other. I don't know. It's nine o'clock, so. All the specific stuff, all I can tell you is I didn't, I didn't really look at the code. I, all I did was I took what was there and took what's in the comp plan and moved it into the appropriate section. And almost, I changed all the shall, the shoulds back to shall. As Mr. Perry had suggested, the comp plan shouldn't say shall. So we're, for example, I'm on at thirty, page three, it says, all applications must include decommissioning plan instead of should.
Well, for example, I know, I know we did discuss what it decided that this is brought up, and that is the Department of Decommissioning Plan of law. Right? Was to address again the statutory changes that we did. I know what we were talking about in the context of individual power, as they impose on other commercial development. But that seems like a loose end.
Yeah, I can remember our discussions completely on that. I know we did discuss it, but I didn't, when I, when I searched decommissioning in, in our ordinance online, I couldn't find any other decommissioning, not even that sure exists, and then I didn't do the right check. So anyway, that's just a question.
Look, I understand what you're asking, but I think the, the state law says you can require it if it's required for other, for similar.
If, if we impose similar requirements for other types of similar commercial development. So yeah, that was my question, do we, and if so, where?
I think the, the somewhat cheeky conclusion that we had is we didn't have any other facilities like cell towers, so there was no.
Well, there's legal issues, that's correct.
Yeah.
So what, I thought that some change was made.
The state, the state changed. I didn't get it here.
Which one?
The language from.
We can only require, if we require enough other similar things, and we don't have anything other, we never had anything else that we.
Put it on the blackboard.
Yeah. Put it on the renewable water.
So blackboards are exempt.
Put it on electrical.
Blackboard would be part of your renewable language and stuff, so there we have.
There you go. It's in there, other similar things, right?
So we, then we have to, then we have to delete the current bonding language because that's not. The current bonding language in the ordinance, we have, we have a section on bonding in the ordinance, one seventy dash one oh eight point five, five.
Okay, so that's.
I mean, you take that out, you're going to, and then. If we, yeah, so probably the renewable energy stuff could satisfy that, I don't think, yes. So that one, but there are, there are a few, there is, this is not an exhaustive list, so I, I just think that is what maybe you need to do is we need to, as long as we're in an ordinance change, we ought to make sure that our existing ordinance is, is clean under, it's not in conflict with the existing code. So for example, some other provisions, and you added some of this to date, and the current ordinance of one seventy dash one oh eight four C provides that antennas on structures existing as a native ordinance was enacted are permitted by right as long as no word level number extends more than five feet from the antenna, from the antenna support structure. But the code says small cell facilities can extend no more than six cubic feet.
Cubic feet?
Cubic feet in volume and that facility, and other requirements, equipment associated with the facility has a cumulative volume of no more than twenty-eight cubic feet, then we can't, we can't require current for that.
So we have to say something to what's that? Then you're feet, cubic feet?
Yeah, but it's also a twenty-eight cubic feet.
What's three feet cubed?
Uh, it's two sections of the code, the definition section, which I'll have to give you in just two seconds, and then the subsequent provision, which is fifteen point two dash twenty thirteen, uh, two, excuse me, twenty-three sixteen point four A. And the. The other would be.
So that's going into one oh eight point four.
But it's, yeah, you can't have both against one or the other, so, yeah.
You can have both.
You can't say, you can't say five feet and, and, and that, that's not consistent with the statute, I think.
Well, you could have one foot by five foot by one foot, that's five.
Let me do the table for a second. Go ahead, Michelle.
During this meeting and next meeting, someone or people could say those and then make those directions or backdraft of that. Because it's actually all about.
I think that's the right idea, because I didn't have to all, you know.
Good, good idea. Good idea. Who's got a different?
Let's have a word with Michelle, or just. All right. And I'll, if I want to address the other things.
Okay, great. So let's flip to the renewable energy. And just briefly tell you, I mean, it's all highlighted, they're what I did. I added the words conventional fossil fuel or hydro to the electrical generating plant. That's all I did. All we used to say was electrical generating plant facilities, can say it. And then I've added two categories, which I think is consistent with what's in the comp plan, renewable energy generation facilities, winter solar, less than one megawatt, designed primarily for on-site consumption, we're exempted by the code. That's permitted everywhere because they're exempted by the code. And then renewable energy facilities, winter solar, one megawatt or greater, or designed primarily for off-site consumption. And those are all S E's. Okay, with requirement for site. So that was the change to that. Definitions are new, consistent with, that's above there, lines one through seventeen on page seven. And, and then the additional standards, just added a new subsection, pretty much created what was in the full industry comp plan. All about, they have to have taken into account the height, size, blah, blah, blah. All the stuff about proximity to prime agricultural soil, steep slopes, grass, all that, and starred places, scenic valleys, it's all in there. So pretty much, the word looks out there with the, with the suggestion change to shall. And that, page nine, there's your decommissioning of the facilities. So that covers the issue that you.
And seems. That'd be gross, Bob. Seems like the right.
Okay. Well, I guess the question is, are we going to be ready with this stuff to take it? Mr. Perry's not here and I, my recollection is that the last meeting, he said he would undertake to write up, you know, the U T D and he said scale, but he volunteered to help with that. But we need the, whatever we're going to put in the end. So I don't know if we can get that ready, Ken. I mean, how do you feel, commissioners, are we ready to take this to the public hearing for the next? We can change it afterwards, but I don't know, I think we're close enough to take it to the public. If you trust me to do what we just talked about, the counties and all that, it must be in two new categories and do what we did.
What do we say, what do we take to the public?
All these amendments, we take it to the public hearing.
Except what?
Wireless facilities.
And those two?
We made.
Earlier, the director of the county, he said, we're going to back the commission. We're working here, you know, with deprocessing, the on-site, off-site, so that's not possible.
Earlier, what, earlier tonight?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And still, when you say the amendments, you're talking about the ones we've already discussed or if you did, there's the other forms that are in there that were in the original set that were taken out because they weren't the slang dogs, so I certainly don't think we're ready to put those out.
Okay. So, all right, do you want to have another work session before our next meeting? Can I take everything? Okay, when do you want to have it? Sixteen, when I have it, the, the, not next Wednesday, but the following Wednesday? Everybody good with that? Okay, where are we going to meet? Because I really don't see a much point in continuing to meet here unless we have a public hearing.
This won't be available.
You ever take after this week, this is for, it's a close one. What?
We're doing, we're doing.
You don't let me do it.
Sure, that's the problem.
All right, so where are we going to go? Hello, courthouse for the work session? Everybody good with that?
We could meet at courthouse for the work session. Beyond that, we have to think about it.
But we'll run another option. Where do you want to have the next meeting? I mean, the, the issue is that we put out a schedule in the beginning of the year, and so all the meetings are set for the courthouse. Because nobody else wants to happen. And so if we're going to go back to the courthouse, the notice is already out. If we're going to go somewhere else, then we have to put out the notice, is the issue. We're going to have to put out the notice for this work session, but our next regular meeting is October, what, twenty?
Twenty first.
Uh? Twenty first. All right, so the question is, where are we going to, where are we going to have that meeting? Courthouse?
Hate to take us in this rabbit hole, but courthouse is small, there's seven of us, and I'm not leaving there with two of you knowing where it's at in that close space. So I think we're going to go back into that rabbit hole.
Maybe it'll be over by.
Maybe.
Yeah, maybe we'll be ready for that. Maybe it's still far enough to be here. Of course, rural part of apartment are pretty good.
Do we all need to go in for school?
Oh, we can? The band room is there.
Where is it?
The band room? Is that, that space?
No, that's.
That's everywhere. Where do we have it from?
Oh.
That other place.
Carriage area.
Carriage area. Okay, so that's where we have our October meeting.
Normally where?
That.
We're serious, we're tired of it.
What time will we say the floor session?
Seven. Thirty-one, do the afternoon.
Seven, I can't do the afternoon.
I can't do the afternoon either, I'm sorry.
Seven o'clock, everybody good with that? September thirty? September thirty? Correct. What day is it?
Wednesday.
I hope. All right. All right, what are the meetings? I'm in the minutes. All right, uh, wanna do the meeting, or, I mean, the minutes, or you wanna bump that? It's nine o'clock, definitely nine o'clock. I do have some comments on the minutes from the last meeting, I have a few, and I'll just say, well, could I, could I say mine? I'll do it. Hope this works. Hold on, I have a little expert. Ah, here we go, August nineteenth, correct? Um, I don't know, you wanna, let's just try and do these, these ones, there are some other ones that were some controversy about it.
Which one do you charge everybody?
August nineteenth. Could I make some comments? Well, I was gonna run through mine first, real quick. Uh, uh, draft comprehensive plan and so forth. It says, "A review of public hearing in August." I think that's saying, "Direct comprehensive plan review."
Or...
That's it, right? Everything from review to the end, to August, should be scripted. And should just say, "Public hearing, direct comprehensive plan." The chairman stated, blah, 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 it says, "The chairman opened a public comment section, a session," it should say, "Public hearing," instead of comment section. Uh, I'll leave it to you all, fill in what the various people said, and spellings and so forth. Um, and then, uh, that's all the changes that mine had, I think. Oh, in the second part, it says, "The chairman reconvened the meeting," it should be reconvene the meeting. And, uh, that's all I got. So, Mr. Light, what changes have you, uh, August nineteenth, and what are the chair session dates, September two?
So, with respect to the public, um, comments and hearing, I think the first one that I was gonna suggest changes is Ms. Rainy Rose. Uh, she noted, what I, I would say, she noted the need for several clerical changes in the plan. I think the same video is to say, she noted several for clerical changes in the plan. I think, I'm trying to differentiate between when people suggested things we needed to do versus noting things we had done, and I think in this case, it should say, she noted the need for several clerical changes in the plan, right? Similarly, Ms. Abundra also suggested changes to the plan, not noted changes to the plan.
Okay.
And then, uh, I think we should credit Ms. Barsky with the more salient point she made, which is, uh, at the very end saying, "And suggested reversing the shading on the maps," which frankly, I thought was a great idea, I did get along, or you probably did. Thank you, Ms. Barsky, for your left. Uh, and then, again, Diane Bruce made several, instead of notes, changes to the plan, which implies that we'd already done them, I think you should say suggestions of changes to the plan.
Made, still made several suggestions instead of notes?
Yes.
Are you getting holdy?
And then, uh, down on the...
Wait a minute, is it Don Locke's bill, right?
No, I don't think it is.
Hello, down the solo, okay.
And then, they're right here.
You sure?
Yeah.
Hello, we have a...
Don Luke.
That one's, um, there's W E on the S, it looks like it's probably... Oh, we see Mr. Locke's, huh?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Mr. Kohler moved, et cetera, motion failed, two to five, and carried, two to five. Same on the next one, Ms. Ishi moved, the motion failed, two to five.
It should be to, not to forward the resolution, to approve, Mr. Fraser moved to approve the resolution, which is, and then, after resolution, recommending approval of the comprehensive plan strength for adoption with the work events. If there's some discussion...
What?
If there's some discussion in common, then we'll vote, vote, what's? Motion verified, too, and then it should say, the, uh, it should be in print, the resolution is attached. By the way, I went to the supervisor meeting the next day and gave them a copy of all sign, that being for sure, and a certified copy of the comprehensive plan, and they, I guess, I don't know, like, neglected, you know that, if I did attend the meeting, went on behalf of the commissioner and the board, set for public hearing on their October meeting, I think it is the fifth? And where's that gonna be? They didn't, they didn't know yet, that was, I was, they were, they were talking about it, but, October, so, commissioners, I hope that you'll put that on your calendar as well, and everybody should try to go there, hopefully speak in favor of them adopting.
Where's that?
Where? Yeah, I don't know, but, where's that? They didn't, that's what they didn't decide on the third day, somebody was gonna check on it.
They have some things they don't mention, so...
I think so.
Yes.
But it'll be in the paper, so, and I'll send it around, remind everybody.
If you don't read it?
I'll send it around to everybody, not the paper, and, and remind them. All right, any other changes?
Yes, the ones I sent my earlier email.
Okay. Have you got them, Monday? Good, all right, and what about recess meeting? I think this informational box, that doesn't have to be in the minutes. I put a big X on it, Mr. Henry, so recess, blah, 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 until September one, is that the right date, or was it September two? I guess it's September one, it's in, okay. Recession meeting, I already got that there, reconvene the meeting, have a comment, so, so, anybody have any further changes there? All right, do we have a motion to approve these as, uh, so, right, as amended, including Mr. Schul and so, we have a second minute, thanks to Light, all in favor, second, why I say an aye?
Aye.
I oppose, say no. All right, you wanna do the other meeting, that we couldn't get through the last time, to check out which one of those, we got stuck on?
Twenty-fourth. You wanna do it?
What, what?
I'll do it.
Where did we get stuck on?
We got stuck, well, near the beginning.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ellen.
Go ahead. Well, I'm working off this one that says revised draft. Okay.
All right, so, I will just...
I'll say one thing, the chairman should say reconvene, instead of recall, reconvene. The meeting in strike from recess, reconvene the meeting back to order at the top.
So, I, I'll say that, I know we had some words about this last time, so, I, I guess I just would like to clarify that I don't think this is, some of these things in the end blow down the draft holes, I don't know we need to spend a lot of time on, I don't personally have a lot of interest in doing that, but I do feel like, um, the minutes that were originally put forward in the draft, with two changes were acceptable, probably there were a few things I would've changed, um, and then, some revisions were suggested to those, and my concern with the revisions, I, I don't doubt at all that, um, that they were made in good faith, and they were expressing what, you know, Mr. Kranek felt were omissions, but I felt that the result of that was to, to suggest that, um, there were, there was less controversy around some issues than in fact there were, uh, there was, and, um, that's, I guess, all on where I'm coming from, is if we're gonna have a record that states, uh, some issues in depth, then we have to present the fact that there was controversy on those, and, um, I don't wanna do that in a way that gets people's tackles up, and I don't wanna be difficult about it, but I, I do feel like we need to, you know, just recognize those facts, um, and at the very end, too, what was left off was, and I assume this was a, just a, just an error, there was no mention of the fact that we had, um, changed our procedure, um, for some reason, that seems to have got dropped off, so unless I missed something, I think that needs to be added at the end.
Right.
So, um, I, I, quickly, we can walk through some of these things, or you saw them last time, I submitted them to you?
Okay, well, I think where we got left off, and we had a tie vote, was Mr. Schulman wasn't here, and, so, primarily for his benefit, since everybody else heard it, my view of the minutes is, all they gotta have is the subject matters that were discussed, the motions that were made, and the votes that were taken, and, uh, I think we're, again, we get, we get the minutes approved, and we put them in the book, no one's ever gonna look at them again. So, uh, I think what the revised draft accurately does that, without getting into all the gory details of it, and, uh, it says, Mr. Light moved to reconsider the electronic participation of, of strike the, I should say, of Mr. Ishi and Ms., Mr. Kohler for this meeting, after some discussion of the issue, including Robert's rules of order that require a motion reconsideration, uh, I think there, there's a mistake, anyway, it should say, "To be made by..."
Where?
And then, right, right under the revised, that part is sort of covered up, "A motion for reconsideration to be made by a member who voted with the majority."
I don't know, I have to break one.
Right over, the line above adoption of agenda.
Sir, I know, it's very, very...
Right, it should say, "Participation of strike the Ms. Ishi and Mr. Kohler for this meeting, after some discussion of the issue, including Robert's rules of order that require a motion for reconsideration insert, to be made by a member who voted with the majority." Um, the motion died due to a lack of a second. Which, I'm not sure if that's really right, because there, there was only a motion made by Mr., actually, that, it's on my recollection, is that Mr. Light's motion, I ruled that it was improper because he didn't vote with the majority, he didn't vote at all because he wasn't here.
But it also died due to a lack of second, so it...
All right, and then, and then there was the second, so, anyway, that captures it, and we don't, you know all this gory detail, and so, that's where we were, somebody moved to approve it.
We can, but you...
As, as it was.
We didn't move to prove it as it was, I'd have made a motion last time, that was the, I did...
You made a, maybe you made a motion to add your, whatever you wanted to add in, and that, that failed on a tie vote, and that's when we decided to table it, until Mr. Schulman came back, right?
I moved that we pass Ms. Ishi's version of the meeting.
All right, is there a second to that?
Aye, sir, aye.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Okay, we got Ms. Ishi, Mr. Light, and Mr. Kohler, opposed, say no.
No.
All right, the rest of this voted no, so that motion fails, so can I, now we have a motion to pass it, as with the changes that we just talked about, in the revised draft motion?
I make the motion to allow me to go through the changes and explain them.
No, we're not gonna do that, 'cause it just failed.
So...
No, we're not gonna do that, is there a motion to, there's no motion on the floor anywhere.
I make the motion, I make the motion that, yeah, approve it, hasn't had anything, Mr. Curry.
All right, so we got Mr. Henry moved to approve it as, as with these slight changes that we just talked about, is there a second? Second. Mr. Fraser, second, any further discussion of that motion?
Yeah, I asked, yes, I have one thing.
Right.
Up at the top, were we not, since this was a reconvening of the minute, of the meeting, where we were present electronically, shouldn't we still be present electronically?
Well, you weren't, because you were, you weren't allowed to participate, so you were absent.
Well, I think we were, we were there for the roll call of the first meeting, and for, there was actually, I think, a vote taken, and then, we were excluded after that, so we were...
You weren't excluded, your motion, your request to participate electronically was denied, you weren't excluded.
I say different, we were excluded.
Okay, your request to participate, that's what the statute says, and that's what we voted on, or did, so, therefore, you weren't there, it was a continuation of the meeting, you weren't there. But I don't have a problem, you wanna put, where, uh, where, I don't know, what do you wanna say? One, one, the, uh...
President, Florida.
Will you play the part? But, okay.
I'll be, I was present at the, at the former meeting, it was during the meeting that we were excluded through further discussion.
All right, so that, does anybody wanna, do you wanna amend your motion, Mr. Henry?
No.
Okay.
So there's further...
Listen.
No, there's further discussion here, I, I, there's further discussion, I, we don't have a big audience here, so this is not for some audience, but I, I feel like we need, this needs to be said here, and I, I don't, I don't doubt, because you said so, and therefore I take it as a, as a given, that what was done, um, and to exclude us from those, those meetings, was done because both of you who voted for it believed that was necessary to under, under FOIA, despite the fact that that's...
Miss under what?
Under FOIA, Virginia FOIA, despite the fact that both Mr. Curry and Mr. Gerhardt had said otherwise, but that's what...
But, but wait a minute, but they didn't say otherwise, Mr. Curry might say otherwise, Mr. Gerhardt did not say otherwise.
I have a floor, and...
Mr. Gerhardt said, "You have to vote on it," and that's what we did.
They have their floor, thank you. This is just for us, we're not, we don't have a service here, we don't need that, but there is legitimate disagreement between, as to whether that conclusion is correct. And I will tell you, I think that the three of us who, I think, were excluded have shown right restraint, uh, with all the respect, Mr. Conne, you wrote a letter to, uh, Mr. Gerhardt on planning commission station area that did not reflect abuse of the planning commission, was not voted on by the planning commission, we didn't say a word about that. You sent detailed notes to the board supervisors, setting forth your position without giving any, uh, visibility to the fact that there were opposing positions, and again, we said nothing about that. Now, and maybe had their reasons for it, and felt that was the right thing to do, but I will tell you, folks, that I have read that statute as well, and the statute, in my opinion, does not say what you think it says. I think the statute very clearly says that you have to have a physical court present in order to have a meeting. If you don't have a physical court present, barring a declaration of emergency, you can't have a meeting. So, i- if you do have that physical court present, you may choose to allow some members to participate electronically if they're not able to be there, you don't have to do that, but if you do do that, it has to be pursuant to a resolution that you pass that needs or requirements of that Virginia Code provision, and that Virginia Code provision very clearly states that there are two reasons to do that, and two reasons only, is one, if you have a personal condition, in which case you have to state that specificity, or two, if you have a medical condition or other disability that prevents you from being there, and you do not have to state that with specificity, there's nothing in the code that requires you to do that, so when you made the decision to vote on it and exclude us, there was no authorization for that, we did not have anything on a resolution at that time, and there was nothing in the code that allowed that. Now, there is some question as to whether, and this is what Mr. Gerhardt said, and I will agree with you on that, that if you, if you then pass a, an eternal resolution within the planning commission to, uh, to, as setting conditions for, uh, that kind of approval, it's, it's possible, although it's not clear, that you can require, um, uh, somebody to explain their medical condition. That's not required by the statute, but it's... That's not required by the statute, but it's conceivable it's possible.
Why, 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 wait, 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 wait.
I, I think I have the floor.
This has nothing to do with the minutes.
I think I have the floor.
This has nothing to do with the minutes.
I think that's your opinion.
David, wait till after the meeting.
No, this is, this, we, we sat and listened to this.
No, you haven't, you've been counting about this for ninety days.
You're right.
You didn't get your way, you've been pouting about this.
Mr. Chairman, I believe I have the floor.
The minutes are the minutes.
I think I have the floor.
Oh, my God, you're giving me a medical condition, too. It's very low where I'm sitting at right now. So, you gonna go on with this?
I think I have the floor.
You do? You do?
So.
Yeah, she said.
Wow.
Thank you very much.
Look, look.
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna just say.
Now, just let me, just let me finish.
I'm, I'm gonna say, because, wait a minute.
No.
No, wait, no, wait a minute, I'm, I'm still running the meeting, so just wait a minute.
Mr. Conne, you took.
I'm gonna let you finish, but I'm gonna ask you to finish up, because otherwise, I'm gonna entertain a motion to terminate your, which we can do under the rules, and under Robert's rules. But, I, I have to say that, I, I mean, we know what your position is, I appreciate your position, and I hope that you appreciate my position. And, and my position, that has now kind of become a moot point, my position is and was that, that you might be right, and, and, and as I said at the time, you might be right, and Mr. Curry might be right, and Mr. Gerhardt, who kind of punted on it, uh, and is writing an opinion on it right now, because I checked with him, and it's coming out in the near future, might or might not be right, and reminded me himself that even when he issues his opinion, it's only advisory. And also, I spoke, as I said at the time, with Senator Mark O'Conchain about getting an attorney general's opinion, and would he do that for us? And he said to me, "David, you can get an attorney general's opinion, and that's only gonna be advisory and not binding on anybody." So whichever way you go, whichever thing you do, if it turns out that some court says that wasn't the right thing to do, to let them in wasn't right, or to vote to not let them participate electronically was right, and even then, he said, "That's not gonna be binding, because that could be appealed." And so, uh, my suggestion to you all at the time, and my feeling about it, is that wherever there is a doubt about what was the appropriate thing to do, we should err on the side of caution, because, not, not for any other reason, except that at that point in time, the next meeting after that was this public hearing that we had about the comprehensive plan. And if we had, I didn't know what was gonna happen at the time, and neither did you, nobody knew, but if that issue was still on the table, and we had our public hearing, and that was still floating around, that somebody participated electronically that shouldn't have, it could've called the whole, called the entire comprehensive plan into question.
Okay.
And that's, that was, that was certainly, everybody who talked about it, from O'Conchain on down, was their view. And so, all of this, back and forth, of what's in the minutes, whether we did the right thing or didn't do the right thing, you know, it doesn't matter in here, and me, PS, who all came, thank you very much, to the public hearing, and I'm glad that you did, and come to all the meetings since, and I'm sorry if you feel the way you feel, and I'm sure that you're sorry of the way I feel about the letters that you wrote to the editor, instead of expressing your views here, like you already did numerous times, and then had to do that, you know? So you've got your opinion, and we've got our opinions, and we know what your opinion is, and I very much appreciate it, maybe more than others do, but so what? We're doing the minutes, the minutes reflect what happened. If you wanna put something, you've already expressed yourself, and it's out there.
I appreciate that very much, thank you, and I, I do accept that where you're coming from is where you're saying, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't doubt that. I guess the only thing I'd like to finish on that is, again, we didn't spend as much time, what, I was gonna say, I didn't spend as much time as some others have spent on this, and I don't, and I think it's a big waste of our time, frankly, and I think you're right, to a certain extent, it's moot. But I do, I do think that the, the amendments that we made to our resolution are, are wrong.
What resolution?
To our procedural procedure. Are wrong, um, and I'll state that for the record, um, and I hope that when common mind prevail, and we get past some of this stuff, we can revisit that and make more sense out of that. But, and for, for now, I'll just leave it at, I don't think the record accurately, the minutes accurately reflect the fact that there was controversy about this, and that it was not a clearly, um, a, 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 a clear set of facts, so, um, I, I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Okay, so we got a motion.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask, what, does, do the minutes say about the changing of the procedures?
No, but I'm, we're gonna have that. Okay. And we'll just put in what, I mean, does it, whatever section, I don't remember what it was that has changed.
Does you think it, or motion factually relevant?
Oh, yeah, definitely, we'll put that in, so that's part of, that's the, I'll give it a section. I thought that I had done it. All right, so there's a motion on the floor to accept it, or approve the minutes as amended tonight. And it's consecutive. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
All right, we got four ayes and three noes. All right, who will we adjourn? Motion to adjourn, is there a second quarter? Uh, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you all. And, uh, I will see you on.